Good evening, and can you hear me?
No.
I don't think anyone can hear me. Oh, now it can, okay. Don't hear me too loud. Okay, good evening, and welcome to the special meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Tuesday, December 9th, 2014, 7:30 PM in Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Called to order.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Minier.
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt.
Here.
And the records show Commissioner Parker is entering the building.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on to item D, Oral Communications, which is a limit of total of 15 minutes for any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Does anybody wish to speak at Oral Communications? Sir? Okay, item E is Written Communications. I have quite a few things here. I have a letter from Sustainable San Mateo County. I guess that's just their annual letter to everybody in the county. We have On Common Ground, city's ascendants from Realtors and Smart Growth, magazine from Western City, two copies of the Bay Area Monitor. Does anybody not have one?
I did not get one of those.
Now you do.
Did you?
No.
A copy of Service Matters, Association of Bay Area Governments publication, and we also have an email from Anya Miller. Okay, moving on to item F, New Business. This is a public hearing. 515 Tunnel Avenue, Use Permit UP-4-14, temporary Christmas tree storage for recycling. Brad Derta, Recology Properties, Inc., is the applicant. Sanitary Phil Company owner, APN 005-152-330. Staff?
Yes, thank you. Recology proposes to temporarily store Christmas trees for recycling within an approximately 900-square-foot area paved storage yard at 515 Tunnel Avenue. Discarded trees will be collected in San Francisco from December 20th through January 31st, temporarily stored on-site and reloaded for chipping at Recology's Materials Recovery Facility just over the border in San Francisco. The chipped materials will then be used for energy production at an off-site biomass facility rather than being landfilled. A temporary storage area is needed because the surge of trees collected exceeds the rate that they can be processed at the recovery facility. Use permits were approved by the Planning Commission for the same use at this site for the previous six years. A temporary use permit is required since there are no uses which are allowed by right in this zoning district. The application meets the required findings with no comments or concerns were raised in staff's review of the application, and no complaints have been raised by the public from previous year's operations. Staff recommends conditionally approving use permit UP-414 per the Agenda Report, the adoption of the resolution containing the findings and conditions of approval.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, I always ask, is there anything different about the Christmas tree recycling this year?
Is that microphone on? Sorry.
And, yes.
You can bend it up.
Yeah. There never is. It's the same thing. They're going to bring in the trees after Christmas and process them as quickly as they can, and it'll smell like Christmas.
Yeah.
For a little while longer.
All right. Do you have some questions?
No, I just said that it's becoming an annual event here.
It's for Christmas.
It is, and I thank you for having me. Beginning of my Christmas celebration.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No questions.
I do, but just for people who might not be familiar with your program, could you just explain a little bit about what you do, and then what is that biomass use? I've actually forgotten what you do with them after.
It's burning at a boiler in the valley that burns wood and agricultural byproducts. So the Christmas trees are not suitable for regular composting, I'm told.
The acid?
The smell is, makes them a little bit less than helpful to delicate plants, not the smell, but the resins or the acidity, some characteristic. So since they're not, we compost everything we can, but the trees, the trees seem to have no higher purpose than biomass. At least it's a carbon-neutral, or less-than-bossle, energy source for a little while. That's all I know.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Happy holidays.
Thanks. As this is a public hearing, but I see no other people in the audience this evening, we need to close the public hearing.
I motion we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What is your pleasure?
Approve the conditional permit.
Yes.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Right. Thank you. So, motion and a second for that?
Yes. Let's make a motion to approve use permit UP-4-14.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very easy.
So can you just repeat one more time, just so the people at home know why this particular application comes back year after year after year to us for approval?
Yes, so this particular use is not included in the zoning district regulations as a use that can be applied for as a standard conditional use permit. There are other provisions in the code that allow for temporary uses throughout Brisbane in districts, and those temporary uses have the findings which you have here. So this, because it's 45 days or less, which fits with their program for the tree recycling, it fits within that category of a temporary use. So it's only good for that 45 days, otherwise it cannot be a temporary use.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are now moving on to item G on the agenda, which is a study session, amendment to the circulation element. Study session number two for amendment to the circulation element of the general plan to incorporate provisions for complete streets pursuant to the Complete Streets Act of 2008. Staff?
Yes, thank you. This is the Planning Commission's second study session on the proposed amendment to the city's circulation element of the general plan. Objective of the amendment is to ensure that the element provisions includes provisions for complete streets consistent with state law. The purpose of this study session is to provide further information to the commission in advance of your review of the element as a whole. The commission has been provided with a preliminary draft of the complete streets goals, policies, and programs, and will take any preliminary thoughts and feedback you may have at this time. The Planning Commission's review of the amended circulation element is scheduled for January, so the actual hearing would be at that time, and it would follow the receipt of recommendations from the Complete Streets Committee, which was appointed by city council earlier this year. The Complete Streets Committee met on December 3rd and received the same draft comment, or draft policies and programs which you now also have, and they've scheduled a second meeting in December, December 17th, to provide their recommendations. These recommendations will then be provided for the Planning Commission's considerations along with the draft element as a whole. Note that the draft that you have is only that portion that pertains to complete streets. For tonight's discussion, I'll provide a brief review of the purpose and content of the general plan and circulation element, some overarching guidelines for the commission's review, and just a brief overview of the proposed organization of the circulation element. Regarding the general plan, the general plan serves as a jurisdiction's basic planning document. It sets the direction for all future development throughout the city. Per state law, general plan is to include seven mandatory elements, which plan for the comprehensive long-term growth of the city. These elements include land use, housing, conservation, open space, noise, safety, and circulation. The circulation element has specific requirements under state law, which now includes provisions for complete streets. The Complete Streets Act requires updates to circulation elements that are done after 2011 to plan for a transportation network, which includes all types of users as appropriate to the context. Regarding overarching considerations for you, there are a few things to bear in mind in reviewing the proposed amendment. The intent of the amendment is to provide an update of the element consistent with the Complete Streets Act. In so doing, there are implications in terms of reformatting the sections and ensuring internal consistency. This also provides an opportunity to update certain policy and program language, or delete programs which have been accomplished and are no longer relevant. In reviewing the draft of amendments, it's important for the commission to bear in mind that there's a hierarchy of goals, policies, and programs. The goal is stating an overarching aim of the city. Those are provided currently upfront in the element. Policies provide general direction on a particular topic, and programs provide more specific direction on how to implement a policy. Well, programs are always tied to a policy which it is to implement. Not all policies necessarily are tied to programs, so you have certain policies which may stand on their own without a series of programs to follow them. Since the purpose of the general plan is to set general direction for the city, it's important to note for the commission not to attempt to address specific projects in this. To this end, the policy and program language is fairly broad. Also, you'll see that there are certain policies and programs regarding cooperation with outside agencies. Since the city does not have control over outside agencies, the policies and programs generally cannot commit the city to a specific action, but indicates cooperation with these agencies to meet a particular aim. Finally, with regards to organization of the element, as discussed in the previous study section, the adopted circulation element already includes a number of policies and programs that align with complete streets objectives. They are not necessarily cohesively organized, though, under a complete streets framework, given that the major aim of the amendment is to reorganize the current element to establish that cohesive framework under a complete streets. The attached draft of the complete streets goals, policies, and programs reflect the first stage of that overall reorganization. The existing element already includes sections on bicycles, pedestrians, and transit, which have been brought under the umbrella of complete streets, since these are integral components of complete streets. Finally, the proposed amendment additions are coded in blue, so things that are added are in blue. Current text is shown in black, and where deletions are suggested from what's currently in the general plan, those are shown as strikeout. As part of the final amendment, additional text will be included in the main body of the circulation to provide the context for these complete streets requirements. So this is really the first piece, which, and you'll, we'll build on this as we get into the public hearing in January, you'll see the element at that time in its whole. So if there's any questions?
I have more questions with the general plan. So, on page six, I mean, 1-8, it says Program T15.3, "For newly designed and constructed sidewalks, disallow automobile parking thereon, and for existing sidewalks adjacent to rolled or vertical curbs, encourage residents to park such that sidewalks are kept clear for pedestrians in accordance with ADA with standards." I read that through a few times, and I must admit, I don't quite understand it.
So this is a policy essentially to, or program to have the streets that are newly designed and constructed to meet clearance standards, so that if you have a rolled curb, essentially you still have room to keep the sidewalk clear, so pedestrians could walk by the car without having to go out in the street. And currently, many of the streets in Brisbane have those rolled curbs, and you'll see a brick stripe essentially just above the rolled curb, and that, the idea of that is that's where the wheels on the inside would, they wouldn't go over the brick, and so if you're, if you're...
I guess I really don't understand what the rolled curb is. Is that...
Ah, right. So instead of a standard curb where you have essentially a 90-degree angle where the curb meets the gutter, with a rolled curb, it just makes a gentle slope so you can park up onto a portion of the sidewalk essentially, and so it's a softer curb, if you will, instead of a hard angle there.
Just curious, what's the advantage, or why do we do rolled curbs? To make it easier? Is there any other reason we would do that?
The city engineer could probably answer this better than I, but I, my thinking is that with the narrow streets that we have in upper Brisbane, it allows a little more flexibility for both parking, but where cars are not parked, you have, you can pass easier.
Bicycles, strollers.
Yeah, so I think it's a narrow street kind of a solution.
Is that going to be standard throughout the city? Are we going to just put them in as de rigueur moving forward?
I think it depends on the street. I really think it varies by street, width and ability to accommodate a full width street.
Okay. Sorry, Carolyn, I jumped in on your question.
No, no, no. I just was trying to understand the rolled or vertical curbs, and whether that had anything to do with the sidewalk entrance, going into the street for people with disabilities. So I was very confused.
Any questions or comments here?
Yeah, I have a question regarding T15.3. The first sentence says, "For newly designed and constructed sidewalks, disallow automobile parking thereon." What does that mean?
I'm sorry, what are you...
The first sentence, it says, "For newly designed and constructed sidewalks, disallow automobile parking thereon." What does that mean?
I'm not on the policy, but it's essentially saying that you're going to keep that sidewalk separate.
Jamil, I heard a lot of the mothers speak on this quite some time ago before this even came up, that I think part of this is possibly in here because with a young mother with a stroller trying to get up and down Brisbane streets...
Or father.
Or father, sorry. Mother or father, they were having trouble getting around the cars that were parked across driveways into the street.
But I don't think this is what it says here. I'm not very clear. That's what I want to clarify. No objection to that.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is if you have a sidewalk, the way it reads now, it says if you have a sidewalk, you should not allow the parking. So if I have a sidewalk here, I'm not allowed to park along that? That's not what the intent is here. Am I correct? I mean, I'm not completely clear here. In a road, the way I read it, if there is a road and if you have a sidewalk, then you don't allow any parking along the road.
No, it says you can't pull up onto the sidewalk.
It doesn't say that.
That's how I read it. It refers to newly designed and constructed sidewalks.
Disallow automobile parking thereon. What does that mean? Parking on the street?
On top.
Or parking on the sidewalk? Or don't block the sidewalk? It's not very clear here.
Yeah, we can, we can do some wordsmithing there. The intent and the wording is to prohibit you from pulling up onto the sidewalk and blocking.
Well, that's, I fully support that, but I don't want this language here that prohibits any kind of parking when there is a sidewalk. That's the way it reads right now, to me, so.
I also had a confusion because I thought for the newer streets that are being developed in newer neighborhoods, when we first moved in on the ridge, there was no street parking at all, and I noticed in Crocker Park, many areas don't have any street parking. And so I thought this pertained somewhat to that as well, and so I'm, that's where I feel that this language is confusing. Does that mean that, you know, any buildings going forward, that there's going to be just not so much street parking?
There's a, a program under, this is page G15, the bottom of that page is bullet items, the very last bullet is maintaining on-street parking needs in balance with other needs. So essentially, this is part of the overall complete streets in infrastructure and design features. So what it's saying is essentially that we want to provide on-street parking where it's feasible, it's not always feasible to do so, or in certain places like arterials, it may not be desirable as well to have, you know, you may want to have more separation than just a sidewalk, and so there might be other requirements there.
There's several paths off Crocker Park, which are walking past, areas that go down by the creek so people can listen to the frogs, and there's basically no place to park unless we go trespass on someone's property. And I have done my fair amount of trying to be, you know, figure out how to do this gracefully without causing problems with the businesses. You know, I'm sure they don't appreciate us parking in the parking lots. So I know we're supposed to be looking at a broad issue, but I think that is a broader issue. If we're creating paths for people, you know, there should be some way for them to have a place they can, you know, if they're coming from another area to park, so that they can actually enjoy the paths.
Agreed, and I think if you look at policy T4, that's the intent of that, and it may be addressed elsewhere in here too, but I think this is pretty on point, is to seek to retrofit existing roadways to create complete streets, and then you have some programs under that. So, you know, it's, the intent is to provide that broad policy language that, as the city, you know, once this is adopted, the city can undertake to identify those kind of places within Crocker Park or elsewhere, that really where we need to have better connections, for instance, say between the northeast ridge and central Brisbane possibly, was one I, you know, it's easy to start thinking of all kinds of projects, but there's a danger, I think, in including those in the policy or program language, because you want the city to have that flexibility for the future of prioritizing, okay, we have certain amount of funding that we can dedicate, and here's how we want to prioritize. So it'd be a more detailed level analysis at that point.
I don't quite understand if we're creating programs for bicycling, et cetera, you know, where exactly would be the language that we would provide places to, you know, maybe park the cars, or even places to, you know, put the bicycles, you know, in areas such as Crocker Park. I don't see the particular wording that makes it pop in my mind that there is something that's covered there.
It's something we can look at a little closer for you and see.
Yeah, I think the idea of making sure that bicycle, the kind of amenities that are required to support, whether it be bike commuting, or what have you, or I think that's appropriate for here. I think what you're getting at with your other question is probably more of a recreation issue, right, because you're talking about recreational use of trails and how people access trailheads. Probably better addressed in the, and that's the problem when we're dealing with kind of a one-off portion of the general plan, you do have a whole recreation element as well.
We do have a recreational.
And so the idea of providing access, whether it be parking for recreational facilities and whatnot, is probably better addressed under that particular element. Complete streets, you know, it's kind of a stretch for that particular component, and I don't know if it's really an elegant fit here, I think it's a much more logical fit in the recreation element of the general plan, and we can make note of that, you know, again, this whole general.
If we do it in there, is there a place here where we can reference?
I think we could come up with some language.
I mean, this is going to become more and more important, I think, as people, you know, rely more on bikes and...
Yeah, I think, again, it's, it is a little bit of a different kind of animal, because you're really talking about is recreation access, and the idea that recreation access via complete streets is really important, and I think that's, there's a lot of language in here about the pedestrian policies, walkways and trails, improve with pedestrian amenities, et cetera, et cetera. The idea of staging for recreation, parking for recreation, is, you know, it's a little more tangential to the purpose of this amendment, because it really is part of the whole, if you're going to create a recreational amenity or facility, you know, it's three components. It's the facility itself, it's how you access the facility, and it's how people are served by it in terms of parking or however they access it. So, you know, if we need parking for recreational facilities, that's, you know, part and parcel to that facility.
I have a broader question on why there is no parking currently allowed in the industrial
What's that answer?
So there's the, just the last few years or so, they opened up parking along Park Place and Park Lane to some degree.
Right.
These are smaller streets where you don't have the high-traffic volumes as you have on Valley Drive, and so Valley Drive, there's a certain need to keep, keep the lane widths for truck traffic, and so there's that balance essentially, and it may be something that we look at in the future as to, are there, is that an area that needs to be retrofitted? For instance, you have sidewalks on one side of Valley but not both sides, you know, there may be certain improvements to be made there as well.
Well, those streets are pretty wide. Couldn't we still have parking on one side, bike lane on the other, and still have plenty of room for the trucks? I mean, isn't that partially what this is all about?
It may be a deeper study into what the impacts would be on the level of service along that street, you know, for vehicle movement, and so it's... And, and so it's, it's a little bit of a, I think, a deeper analysis in terms of the solution there.
I think certainly we can look at this here, but I think there's probably an opportunity for a policy language that's specific to Crocker Park in terms of looking at, you know, right-of-way, et cetera, to accommodate these other uses as well. So I think there's an opportunity for some policy language to get to the issue, but doesn't, you know, again, because until we've studied it, you know, nobody can guarantee that's the outcome. But again, as a trigger to, to study it, I think that's a good idea.
Right, especially when you're starting to talk about, you know, connecting the Northeast Ridge to Central Brisbane. And, you know, part of the conversation relative even to the rezoning was about, you know, how, whoops, how do we do that? And obviously, if people can ride their bikes, et cetera, that would be great. And, you know, Van S Avenue is about as wide as Valley Drive, and they've got trucks, people, parking, bikes, all kinds of things going on without too much to do, so.
Yeah, good point. We'll, we'll look at that cluster.
Thanks.
I had a couple of questions about the data collection. So what were the studies and the data collected prior to providing the policy and/or the programs recommended here? Or was it based on previous studies and data?
In terms of the, the guidance, state guidance for complete streets talks about data studies. And, and in Brisbane, essentially, I, I approached the police chief to have them look into if they had any, any past data on accidents. Like if there was any, if there were any trends on accidents at certain busier intersections. And, and essentially, the, the feedback I got from police was that, that there isn't enough data that we have, like, you know, you mentioned Van S. There's clearly data because of the, the level of use and the numbers of accidents that they've had historically there. Brisbane just has not had that history, so we, we don't have a whole lot. And fortunately, it's, it's a good problem, but we don't have a whole lot in terms of that kind of data set.
And also, I think as Ken mentioned, you know, we do have that complete street subcommittee that the council appointed, or committee, I guess technically. They'll be reviewing this as well. They, they've spent, you know, a fair amount of time looking at programs like safe routes to schools, et cetera, et cetera. I know some people have collected data on the Bike to Work Day, so there's probably some data points, you know, in the, small sample size, but there is some data out there in terms of the use on, of bicycles on Bike to Work Day. And, you know, we rely a lot on the city engineer as well and his, his ongoing knowledge of the, the city's street operations and the city's circulation network operations, areas that are of concern, issues of concern. And again, they've had the opportunity, Public Works Department and the city engineer did have the opportunity to review and comment on these policies and programs, and I think did make a number of substantive recommendations there too.
One thing I'd like to see, which I think Brisbane's not really doing a good job, is to keep the signage fresh and painted so that people can actually read it. The curbs are not kept painted. The red areas are now almost white, sort of a pinky white, and the blues are fading away to almost nothing.
Caroline, your mic's not picking you up.
I think we are moving away from the subject matter here.
But, but I don't know if that's moving away from the subject.
We are trying to figure out what's wrong with these streets and all that. I think the subject matter here.
Finish what she was saying first.
So that's what I'm just saying, that we are moving away with the subject matter.
Well, true. But I was wondering if that is, this is an appropriate area to put in something like that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for it here. I, I believe there is a, a program in here that, that refers to signage. I think you have two different issues at hand. One is providing signage that's, that's both directional for cars as well as for pedestrians where, where needed as well, or bicycles. And so I think that's, that's that, getting at that program language, which I think is in here, and I'll, I'll double check that. So it's, it's a good point. I, I think the other, the other side of it is, is more goes to funding issues and, and the ability to, to maintain these infrastructure elements that, that need to be maintained, obviously. But when, when we're kind of, we're coming out of a recession or we're out of it really now. And, and so there's, I think there's probably a bit of catch-up work to do in, in terms of maintenance, so.
I have seen around town some extra signage relative, obviously, to the schools. So some of the safe routes to school, infrastructure improvements are obviously underway. Can you just give us a little bit of a brief on where that's at and what we've done and what else might be coming up that's already in the works?
So we've, there are, we, we do have, going to the program policy language first, we, we did pull some language out of the, the back of the element essentially and brought it up into complete streets and added to that. So there's crossing guard for a school. If you go up, visitation, a few years ago, they put in a flashing crossing signal there. And I'm, I'm not sure all of the projects, John, you might remember some others.
I actually don't, but I think what we can do, provide you in the next go-around with this is, I believe they just were in the process with that subcommittee or that committee of adopting a new safe routes to school program or plan. So once we can check on its status, we can, you know, give you an update that's more, I think, factual-based instead of our kind of recollection.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Regarding the education for the, for the bicyclists and pedestrians, all we have is for the schools. But what about the other citizens of Brisbane? Because of looking at.
Which policy or program are you on?
Policy, I'm looking at program T93. Develop and promote a traffic safety education program for the schools. But what about the other citizens? They are here, shouldn't be concerned about that. And same thing goes for the pedestrians. They have to be educated in terms of where they can use the sidewalks and where they cannot. And again, it's limited to the schools.
Well, to answer the first question, you know, the particular policy is in the section related to safe routes to school. So I think it's very specific to that. I think the idea of adding bicycle education and information. We have policy T14, program T14.2 on page 18. Establish educational program on safe bicycle use.
For students again.
Yeah, maybe we want to just scratch that for students, just period.
Yeah.
Do that. I don't know if there's anything similar for pedestrians. We could, you know, look into putting in some similar language in the pedestrian section.
Now, all of this, this chapter is basically geared towards pedestrians and, and bicyclists. But there's a whole set of things that we need to address regarding the vehicle traffic. Like the concerns about very extreme slopes or very tight curves where the motorists have to make a turn. There should be some kind of a lang, a chapter here or, or section here that addresses that as to how we're going to fix those areas, what are the long-term plan? Or the funding of that, how that can be funded to, to help, to help the situation that we have now. There are a lot of, many, many areas in the city where this, that the, the streets are not properly designed. Very steep curves and not enough room for the big trucks to go by. So in this plan, there should be a separate section related to the vehicle safety and what we're going to do for the vehicle traffic in the city, vehicular traffic. We address very well pedestrians and bicyclists, but not very much regarding the vehicular traffics.
So we'll, we'll check that when we bring the, the whole element back to you and, and see. Essentially, we have, this is just a piece of the, the circulation element and, and what you're talking about. I, I think goes beyond the complete streets.
No, I think it's part of the complete street.
It is part and parcel, but it's, it's complete streets, if you will.
First of all, we should provide the definition of the complete street.
It is.
Complete street.
It is provided on the top of the first page of your handout with the policies.
Are you talking about emergency access or?
No, I'm talking about general, for example, if you're going on Humboldt Road, there is a very sharp curve here. So there should be a policy here as to how we can improve those things. And where the funding, just like we have the safe, safe route to school, that we are worried about the, the kids going to the school, we should provide the safe route for them. And there's a state program for getting that money. You know, we can, that's a very good, actually, funding source. I have applied that many times during my career also. But there should be a similar type of program here so that, so that when the city develop a general fund, you know, as to what, where the monies will go and, and future plans for 10 years plan as to how we're going to improve the infrastructures here for this, for, for the Brisbane should be there. And also, we should have some kind of a provision in the language here regarding the new development as to what, what is minimum standard in terms of widening the street. I think that there is, somewhere in the plan, we have it, excuse me, general plan. But if, if it's a part of the complete street, then it should be here. Because we do require that currently for all the new developments, that with, that existing streets at, there in the front of the development should be extended to 20 feet wide. So private and public both.
So a, a program that, that addresses those standards is the second page, T31, that essentially review and where needed, update the city's engineering design standards to implement complete streets, infrastructure elements.
Well, this, this vaguely addressed that, but I think we, we need to expand on that. Because there's not much here. And just like we extended about the safe route to school and all that, the funding process, this, we want to make sure that we don't forget the motor vehicle safety also.
Yeah, I think, I think as Ken reiterated, this is kind of a, a piece of the larger circulation element. And, you know, again, historically, you know, I think part of the reason this whole legislative need for complete streets is because frankly, transportation planning in California since the 50s has been auto-centric. And, you know, there are numerous, and if you go back actually to, I think, a previous handout Ken gave you, which is the current circulation element, chapter six. You know, you have numerous policies and programs related to the standards for local residential streets, arterial streets, truck routes, hillside street design, et cetera, et cetera. These are all currently in the general plan already. We just were trying to highlight the changes that are oriented toward the, sort of putting these other modes of transportation on a more level playing field in terms of their attention. When you see this back in its entirety, you know, you'll see the, the other policies that we're not really recommending changes to. And I wouldn't really look at them as, you know, I, I think the purpose of the complete streets is primarily to, again, put these other modes on a more level field. There's going to be a lot of policies that already govern and programs that govern sort of the roadway, the automobile roadway system.
Yeah. But what I was trying to emphasize is the fact that even though it may be in the old language here, but we need to amend that such a way that we make the, you know, the citizens, citizens as well as the city council members, what's needed here in terms of long-term planning when they go for the general fund issue, as how the monies can be set aside and all that. The other element which is, we don't have to worry about, and since we don't have that. But I think just, just for a reference, we can put it in as the railroad crossing part. We just don't have any Edgar railroad crossing, but we do have the overpass. So maybe just a, a blurb about that somewhere. Because it's, to make it a complete, complete, a document for the complete street, we have to address every mode of transportation we have within Brisbane.
I'm sorry, so you're, you're, I, I just caught a piece of it. We did a little aside there, but, so you're talking about addressing through a policy or program, safety railroad crossings?
Yeah. But we don't have that Edgar crossing, but we do have the overpass. So there might be some issues regarding the overpass that can be, become a kind of a generalized statement there as to safety of the over, you know, the overpass. Which means you're trying to educate people not to jump over there. And we did provide some provisions when we were designing that by putting the, the screening of that so make it difficult for people to cross over.
Yeah, I'm sure we could come up with some.
But I think there should be.
Yeah, I'm sure we could find a place for some safety-related language on that.
Yeah. Otherwise, I think the document is, is, addresses most of the concerns that I see regarding pedestrians and bicyclists and all that. And very well written, actually.
Dave?
I think I have one comment really. And it involves the word, you know, the word encourage pops up throughout the document. And one of the issues I was kind of tracking on this was the, and we touched on it earlier, was kind of the pedestrian safety on the arterial roads where, you know, driveways make it difficult for cars to park in their driveway, and so they're hanging over the curb right into the, into the street, or they're blocking the sidewalk, more, more to the point. And so what I was trying to figure out was, do we address that in like policy T15 or the arterial policy 47 where the word encourage pops up? I thought, well, maybe we could change that to encourage, encourage or enforce when necessary. Because right now, there's a lot of kind of lax enforcement, you know, on that, unless it's a new sidewalk. Does that make any sense? It's like unless a new sidewalk's introduced, the, the, kind of the role of the city or, or the law enforcement isn't really specified. So I was like hoping we could add something to either replace the word encourage or to add encourage and enforce, you know, something along those lines. Does that make sense?
Very good point. Sorry, Dave, which, which policy or program are you?
I was looking between two of the policies because they, they're, it's addressed the issue of the parking or hanging over, you know, of the sidewalk onto the arterial roads. It's kind of covered in policy 47 and also maybe T15. You know, pedestrians, so the safety of the pedestrians. And it's not like specifically addressed, but it's covered kind of between those two. And, and more specifically, the word encourage, if you look in policy 47, it's used, but it's not backed up by anything. For instance, when encourage is used in other parts, like another policy, there's actually steps that follow the, you know, that word.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. One is, policy 47, you know, is related to arterial streets.
Right.
You're talking about the bay shores and.
Okay, because I was.
Valley Drive.
Yeah, all right, all right.
I think your concern is in residential, local streets.
It's a more like the arterial residential, the main.
Yeah, just for, for the term of art, you would consider that a local street. So I think that helps, we would kind of.
Okay, sorry, right.
Yeah, that's fine. But I think part of the issue is going to be the idea that, again, the prescriptive nature of saying you shall enforce in every case, I mean, there is kind of an element of the general plan. I mean, there is kind of an element of the general plan that is, um, you know, there's always gonna be that element or conditions where you really can't fully implement the requirements in every case. And so you, that's why you get a lot of the wording is encourage or, you know, as appropriate or where feasible. Those are all, always kind of languages, you know, you'll see integrated in because, you know, frankly, you could create a condition where someone could never comply with that general plan condition and, and policy, and we don't really wanna do that. And I think, you know, your point though is well taken. And I think we could look at language, whether it's in here or whether there's, um, and I guess you are talking about existing conditions, because obviously we won't be creating these kind of conditions. Um, let's look at the language a little more and see if we can come up with something that's a little more on point to your concern.
That'd be great, because it was a little soft.
Massage that a little more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some cities do give the tickets if you block the side.
Yeah, yeah, and I was mainly concerned about the main roads.
Yeah.
That's why I got off track with the arterial, right, you're absolutely right. But the, um, the main roads within Brisbane, like Visitation, for instance, that's, you know, a lot of people use that as you go up into the hillside. The sidewalks are blocked because people are parking, you know, perpendicular to their house and they're on the sidewalk and it's, it's not, they're not within the, the white line. So there's like a, you know, there's this gray area as far as enforcement on that, you know. So, so there was something as far as leaving the word encourage versus enforcing of, for pedestrian safety or access in those situations.
Yeah, we'll try to kind of come up with somewhere in here that might fit your suggestion.
Yeah, so it probably fits in there, the pedestrian section, but okay, thank you.
Also, also the, um, commercial vehicles in the residential streets. Sometimes those big trucks as well as the, in the contractors' big, uh, gears. There should be some kind of a language here in terms of where, how, how much of the street they can block or, or how long. Because sometimes they park their moving vehicle right in the middle of the street there and there's no way one can go around. So there should be some kind of a policy regarding the, the.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's always kind of hard under a general plan to, to regulate behavior.
Yeah.
To some extent, I mean, certainly we can encourage, you know, maybe we can come up with some language that gets to that, but I think it's very difficult to, to actually come up with sort of prescriptive standards, uh, on people's behavior.
Just put the encourage will be okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we can look at some language in the safety component.
Yeah, thank you.
Carolyn? I was, are we going to also look at the general plan next? Because I have a lot of questions about that.
Look at other elements of the general plan, you mean?
I mean, I, I mean, so far, we're looking at the, um, oh, I guess we are. Oh, okay, then I do have some questions, excuse me. It says the level.
Which page are you on, Carolyn?
Okay, I'm on one point one seven. So program thirty eight B, develop a program of traffic impact fees to fund the mitigations in accordance with the impacts of new and intensified development and in coordination with the congestion management fee as applicable. I have some questions. How, how is this actually implemented over the years?
I'm, I'm sorry, I.
It's on page one point one seven, ninety-eight, page ninety-eight. And it's thirty-eight B.
To my knowledge, the city has not adopted a traffic impact fee.
So it's just there for the day we want to do it? Or is it something that we should just maybe?
I think you'd wanna keep that ability. I mean, again, sort of the, the blessing and the curse of a general plan. As Commissioner Minier is probably most familiar with having literally hundreds of policies and programs, some of which, uh, you know, in the 20 years since this plan's been adopted have never been sort of implemented. But I, that's one I think that I would not recommend removing, uh, certainly at this.
Okay, that was, that was just kind of, I was curious about that one. Investigate and pursue alternative means of access and egress from Sierra Point. Now, this is something that the planning commission brings up all the time. That Commissioner Minier thinks it's a really good idea to have a alternate mean of, means of access and egress from Sierra Point. And I was interested to notice, actually, it's policy thirty-nine point one. So it, it's, it's in here. I, I don't know if we're ever gonna take it seriously, but it's actually in here to look at an alternative route in case something happens. You know, the, a way for people to get in and out. I know we want to really build up the amount of business in Sierra Point. And that could be an issue for people who are looking at the property, you know, whether there's, um, a secondary access and egress. I'm just not sure, but I think we, shouldn't we find out? You know, if people are maybe eliminating, you know, working there because of, you know, the companies that are looking at the properties?
I, I guess I'm, yeah, I'm a little, I think the question of sort of how the city programmatically decides to decide which of these multiple programs and policies that should be pursued is probably a city council.
Uh-huh.
To me, because again, you could go through all these policies and, and come up with quite a impressive laundry list of, of programs and efforts of study. And frankly, the staff resources and the city resources aren't really there to, to do that. So, um, you know, it suggests the idea of, I mean, implementation of the general plan writ large, and that's really what you're talking about, is really sort of a, a city council-driven endeavor. You know, they, they allocate the resources for these kind of, you know, studies that are technical in nature, and I think what you're talking about is a technical nature, a study in nature. Where's how could you physically accomplish this? You know, what would the cost be? And more of an engineering exercise than a planning exercise, so, you know, again.
Well, it does seem to come up as a planning exercise when someone from Sierra Point brings in property, you know, that they want to build, which may or may not happen anytime soon. Then it always comes up at the planning commission whether, um, there's enough access and egress. So, you know, it is something we discuss.
That's true, but then again, there's also an approved land use plan out there that doesn't require a secondary access, right? So I mean, the idea, that's a good idea, and I think everyone encourages, yeah, that, should we look at that? But it's not a showstopper in terms of what the city's previously approved in Sierra Point from the, you know, the design guidelines back in the eighties. So I mean, sure, it's something that should be considered, but there's nothing in this policy that somehow precludes previously, um, approved development by the city somehow being blocked by the ability to implement this or not implement it.
Can I shed some light on this? The alternate means of vigorous is required in case of an emergency, majority of the, most of the time. And I brought this almost every project that came before us, their need for that. And, um, I was told that there is a emergency exit through that area along the railroad tracks. And, um, I asked several times to get the copy of the general agreements between the, I think, Southern Pacific, uh, Union Pacific Railroad owns that right of way. J P B runs on, on that right of way. So we need to have something in place indicating and also should be distributed to the fire departments and emergency personnel. And in case of an emergency, we, you do have the secondary access or egress, I mean, to get, ways to get out from that area. And that's, I've never seen that, but I think you can explore further on, on to that. And, uh, if there is a policy in play, I mean, there, there is a program in place where, where the fire departments know what to do, where the keys or how to open that access and all that, that should satisfy our concern here. Because there is no other way to make any other access. This is the only two places where we can get in and get out.
Any further discussion, comments, questions?
Well, I'm trying to decide if we could put something like that in our, our complete streets that when necessary, that, that, that people understand access in and out of certain areas in the event of an emergency.
Well, that should be part of emergency preparedness program for the city.
Uh, true.
And, you know, like earthquakes, uh, preparedness, so there could be some kind of a program like that where, you know, the city can promote or that what to do in case of an emergency, how, how to get out of the area of zone you are in. Certain areas, we will, we'll have a very difficult time, you know, because there's only one way to get out.
There's only one way to get out.
But there's not much you can do, that's the way city is built. But there should be some kind of a plan on the city level.
Well, isn't that part of O E S's responsibility?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's already in place as far as I can tell.
Yeah.
And to a certain extent, the community emergency volunteers had some of that information.
Yeah. But once in a while, they, they do the exercises also, I think I've seen that.
Not for a long time.
Not for a long time, but they have, in the past, they have done that. I think the, um, we, if you go through the general plan, there are a lot of things that we reviewed in the past. And now, if you go review it again, there might be some more comments. But first, uh, set of reviews we did back in, when the, Mr. Prince was here, that hasn't been implemented yet. So I don't know whether we should dive into the general plan review. And I think the whole thing wasn't put on hold because of the E I R of the Baylands.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do here is, I think as Ken pointed out, we have a fairly tight timeframe to adopt this particular, um, general plan amendment to the circulation element. I think, uh, I won't speak for Ken, but I think certainly he was aware of the previous, you know, text amendments that were run through the, the commission and the council, whatever, eight years ago now or whenever it was. And I think we're gonna try to integrate those to the extent we could and what made sense. But in the balance, we really not in position where we can spend the next year, you know, reviewing the circulation element. We need to get this thing adopted for complete streets. And for good or for bad, I suspect collectively, you'll get another crack at the, the general plan and it's, uh, all its glory before, uh, this is all said and done.
Let's not.
It's not your last chance, I can guarantee you.
Let's not, let's not go through that exercise again.
Right. I will add that, uh, in reviewing this, I did look at those past suggestions and, and so those, those are being considered as well.
Yeah.
So it's not forgotten.
Thank you.
I've forgotten most of that stuff eighty years ago.
Fortunately, it was written down, so we have a record.
So don't ask me.
Right. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Jamil?
Nothing.
Okay, then. Let's move on to item H, items initiated by staff.
Uh, well, it's my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the planning department family, Julia Capasso. She's in her second week with us. It was quite a.
Welcome.
We're really excited to have her. It's, it was a really competitive interview process, and I think we really did very well. And really pleased to have her on board and let her spend a couple of moments, introduce herself, and turn it over to Julia.
Thanks, John, and good evening, commissioners. Try to keep it brief. But I come to you from the city of Larkspur in Marin, where I worked for just over five years after graduating from college. So I had a lot of experience there and a lot of different, um, types of planning projects, from long, long-range planning to current planning. So I am very excited to have this new challenge, and it's been an excellent first eight days, if I can say that. And I'm really excited to work with you all.
Thank you.
That was very brief.
Thank you, welcome. Anything else, staff?
Oh, just real quickly, the, um, as probably many of the commission members who were present last night or watched some portion of the meeting, uh, the 7,000 Marina Appeal was considered and, uh, the planning commission's action in approving that project was upheld by the city council. So that was the upshot of a very interesting evening. And I think that's really all I have on my part.
Well, one question I had regarding the meeting we had last night, there was one statement was made by the council member Lori Liu, that we don't need to worry about the color scheme. We don't have to look at the colors. And I think she, at any, any of the design review, there's one of the primary responsibility of the planning commissioners to look at the, the overall color scheme, materials used and all of that. So I really want to correct that, that, that if that's the case, then should we do away with, uh, that portion of the review and the design review process? We wanted to ask the people to bring the, the, you know, print chips and the.
It's, it's supposed, from what I understand, it's, it's relevant in when we're looking at the overall.
Yes.
Surroundings, environment of, of a specific applicant. So in that, it's kind of a, maybe more casual definition of design review, but it is included in our role, right? We've had issues like that come up before.
Every project that I've worked on, we, we have looked at it, but, uh.
I, I guess I would, you know.
But I think the council member indicated that that should be left up to them because that's their property.
That's, uh, there are.
And that, I thought that should be corrected, uh, because otherwise, how are we gonna review it?
Yeah, I think, you know, maybe it's a matter of interpretation. How I took that when her, that statement was that she didn't have a issue with the applicant's proposal to change it, not so much that it wasn't our business, as that she had reviewed the color changes and did not have an objection to them, so. The wording is, that's, that's certainly how I took her, her comment.
Well, the thing is, the, the, in the context of the, the, the way she said it was because the, our consultant was recommending the alternate color scheme and all that. And that's where she mentioned that we don't, we shouldn't have any concern about what the, uh, applicant is, is proposing here. They are building and they should be able to do what they desire. That's the way I look, I, I heard it, but I may be wrong. But I just wanted to clear, clear here, for the planning commission purposes, we still gonna go ahead and look at the color schemes. And all the material palettes and all that. And this should be an essential part of our review, okay?
We can make some popcorn and go home tonight and watch it again.
Oh, yeah, of course. No, no, I heard it, I heard it right. And it's possible that under the, you know, sometimes people say it's under the pressure that things that, you know, if you think about it next day, I, I do the same kind of mistakes and, and it's called the Monday morning quarterback or what the call is. And go, when I go home and I say, why did I say that? And, uh, I made a real mistake, I should correct it. So it happens with everyone, so no offense to anyone, but I just wanted to clarify that we're still going to review that.
Well, people like to point out your mistakes. They need to look at themselves first, I think, right? Okay, um, so moving on to items initiated by the commission. Do we have any subcommittee updates? Dave?
The only one I have in, unless something came up in the last meeting, but, or since the last meeting, right, Ken, we had the green building ordinance, the comments received by the group, and then it was gonna be forwarded to the planning commission and open space and ecology. Open Space and Ecology, correct?
Right, and it was, I think you.
Right.
Were absent that meeting, but, so the Planning Commission did endorse the recommendation from the subcommittee, and.
Yeah, that was.
And staff is preparing to bring that forward to city council. And just a point of clarification on that, I think we'll, the council will probably look at forming or using one of their existing subcommittees to probably prep that before it goes to the full council. I think, as the subcommittee is aware, is a fairly complex issue, and I think a subcommittee forum will be a better opportunity for the, for the members of the, you know, the joint committee and the council members to, to kind of work through this before it goes to the council in a more formal setting. So you may be getting some notification about setting up some meetings in January with the council subcommittee.
Okay.
Yeah, the Cal Build It Green versus Lead Quagmire, I guess is probably the best way to put that. I, I mean, from my perspective, the, the most interesting part of all of that is that, you know, our technology has moved ahead so quickly that we've, we've got all of these policies in place, that if we actually adopted them as policies, we couldn't implement them, because the products that could satisfy the policies are not even available through any manufacturing processes at this point. So our technology has moved ahead faster than our manufacturing processes. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, and as Inspector Ryder said, you make a policy, I'll, I'll adhere to it, but we're not going to make people happy, especially if we tell them to have to do something that doesn't exist yet. So that's all very interesting stuff.
But that's what is important, to have the policy that, you know.
Relevant.
That, that should not get obsolete, you know, based on the new technology. The language should be such that, you know, the, we continuously adopting the new, new standards. And I think what happens is that the, that you, the, the state also issues the, the addendums to their California Building Code, and it's the same issue there, too. But if you look at their language, it does allow the new technology to take over, provided that meet the same safety goals or whatever the goals are. So it doesn't go with the, with the product itself, but it goes with a product is going to meet certain criteria. So it may be a transition, transition, transistor from the yesterday era to integrated circuit and new era, they both do the same thing, but transistors are obsolete, you could use the integrated circuits. So that's it.
It's, it's actually much, much more complicated than that, and that's the problem, is that, and the technologies are moving so fast. And, you know, some people who are in our midst believe that some of these technologies won't be available for a long, long time, well, that's just not correct. The driverless cars are doing gangbusters, the driverless shuttles are doing gangbusters, and that's why, from, from our perspective, I think it's really important that we keep that focus. You, you didn't go to the Planning Commission retreat where all of these presentations were made, and this, this is huge. I mean, it's got to be every bit a part of whatever we're thinking about for the Baylands, even for our complete streets. We've got to have that in mind, that there's, there's electric driverless shuttles that could potentially be running up and down Valley Drive, et cetera, et cetera. And these things are available, and they are available right now, so.
I think we discussed that earlier, and we remember at some point.
I wish I'd actually brought that up when we were talking about complete streets, so. Just made my note, good.
Right. Yeah, we, we covered that well.
I think we covered it very well.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments?
I just wanted to know the status of the Bayland EIR. Are we going to see it next year also, or a year after, or what? Any progress?
I think it'll be, I think it'll be published in, in, we're shooting for January at the moment, of 2015, right?
2016?
He's going to ask what year.
15, 15.
Did I hear it correctly?
Just don't hold me to it.
Can you say that again?
I have big goals. January 2015 is.
I think you got it.
Target date.
Okay, and did you get quite a few comments from the applicable agencies?
Less than you would have thought.
Oh, really?
Really, really.
Because there were a lot of things that, you know, inter-agency type of review is needed, and I was hoping that we will have that, like Caltrans and all the other agencies.
Oh, we have Caltrans, we have.
Do we have water?
Well, the city runs its own water, but we do have SFPUC comments.
Oakdale?
But we don't, we have the, all the water districts commented, but we didn't get comments from, say, B C D C, Fishing Game. There are a lot of agencies who did not comment, that we would have expected comments from.
And they throw a curve ball later and comment? I mean, so.
No, you know, a lot of them, in a way, they have an end game of, it's a permit required from that regulatory agency down the road, they're going to have to meet whatever standards. You know, in the glass, glass sort of half-full, we look at this as if they chose not to comment, they have not identified what we would consider a fatal flaw or deficiency in the EIR, silence being there, you know, they don't have anything to object to, I think, is a, is a fairly standard kind of approach to this, so could be considered good news.
Now, what will happen if the EIR is delayed to the point where the Ford, the Candlestick Park development comes up and board? Are we going to revise that part so that we can address the impact of that?
Actually, all that was addressed in the cumulative analysis, because that was all rate planned and approved.
The thing is, we didn't have the complete plans, and now I'm looking, looking at the plans, it looks like it's going to be a much bigger grand scale.
No, the, all the numbers, you know, the, the only numbers that have changed in anything out there are on the Schleglock site, and that's actually covered, that was within what they covered in their EIR. So I'm confident that the cumulative analysis is a, you know, the numbers that were used for Hunter's Point, Candlestick, Executive Park, et cetera, are reflective of the.
That's good.
Development potential.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I would like to remind everyone, we have an appeals process, in case they didn't know, that anyone may appeal the action of the Planning Commission to the city council, not later than 15 calendar days, 10 calendar days for subdivision and sign applications after the commission's action. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the Community Development Department at 415-508-2120. And I would like to now cancel the regular meeting, move on to cancellation of the regular meetings of December 11 and 25, and adjournment to the regular meeting of January 8, 2015, at 7:30 PM. Thank you very much.
I think we had to make a, we had to take a vote on that.
Motion and second on that?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to that.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. My favor.
So, and also, Happy New Year, I guess we're going to see after, after, after New Year. And Merry Christmas to all of you, or Happy Holidays.
Thank you. I just did want to make one more comment, and I'm sure everybody's aware that we have apparently a storm of the decade arriving tomorrow, and I did read somewhere that potentially we have sandbags available, but you might want to call the city tomorrow and speak to Public Works and ask if we have sandbags available here in Brisbane, because it is expected that there will be three to seven inches of rain in a 24-hour period, with winds 25 to 35 miles an hour, with wind gusts in this area of up to 75 miles per hour. So take down your Christmas decorations, was what we were told, if they're outside, anything not tied down, tie it down, bring it inside, and watch out for your pets.